Come to order our apologies for being late. I wish I could say we were stuck in the snow, but we have done our roll call. We have a quorum. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with approval of the minutes. I would like to make one amendment to the minutes for the December 2nd meeting. I was here, I was late.
I'm sorry.
The December 2nd meeting, I was here, I was late.
Did I give you a second?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any others?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Julia moves, Terry seconds.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Terry Kavasich?
Aye.
Rick Cavanado?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye. We're carried. Okay, it's our opportunity for the reception of visitors. This is the opportunity for anybody in the audience to address any of the board members on any of the subjects we're covering in the agenda tonight. We will have a second reception of visitors where we will invite you to address the board on any subject you choose. Hearing none, we'll move on. Informational reports. Dr. McDonald.
Okay. We have several. The first tonight is a report by Airmark, our food service provider for District 99. And this report was prepared by Mr. Rogus and his associates. And thank you again for providing dinner to the board.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. McDonald, Mr. Stalen, and Dr. Cupka and Downers 99 Board, thank you for this opportunity and getting a chance to talk to you. The discussion with the PowerPoint this evening is just a brief overview on the new nutritional standards and how Airmark is responding to them in our schools at both North and South High School. In this first slide here, this is just in regards to the recent changes. It started in 2012 with Mrs. Obama's Healthy for Hunger Act. And on the right side, you can see what's now required and where we're going as a high school, both at North and South High School. We're offering more fresh fruits and vegetables. We're offering more whole grains incorporated in our lunch program. We've reduced or we're minimizing our zero trans fats. We're offering more salads. We do have salad bars to some extent. More low-fat milk dairy products are being offered in cottage cheese and cheese items. Healthier recipes are being tested not only by my leads, but with Airmark and our corporate office in Philadelphia. And we've changed and improving our healthy cooking techniques. Next slide, please, Ron. In this slide here, the overview is in regards to we're offering, this is a plate of what a reimbursable meal is. And on the all-around this plate represents three out of five items which are required for a national school lunch program. Our students are allowed to get any combination of this of three to five items. And on the left-hand side, you can see you can choose fruits and vegetables on the left, or you may select an option of a tossed salad, carrots, or mixed vegetables. Your milk is on the right side. And then our entree selection is usually three ounces consisting of a whole grain object pizza, chicken sandwiches, or pizza. And we may have lean protein in our salads or baked entrees. Next slide, please, Ron. Our school meal program has changed drastically, as I said, and I am still to this extent changing as it goes. And I say that challenged to the extent of finding foods that our students love and enjoy at the same time with these recent changes. And it is a challenge, especially with my culinary background to stay that way. But we're offering more fruits and vegetables which are incorporated and required for the national school lunch program. We must incorporate in that menu per week leafy greens, more fresh fruits and vegetables, to be red or orange vegetables. Carrots and legumes are a must, and they must be incorporated in our menu. More whole grains, that includes our pizza crust, our chicken patties, our whole grain hamburger buns. We're doing whole grain French toast sticks at breakfast time. We're offering more fat-free and 1% milk incorporated. And a lot of it is based on calories and caloric intake on those students. Next slide, please, Ron. The new USDA healthier school meal standards are focusing on the requirements now. And we are continuing to see the focus change. And I can't give you a timetable when we'll get there, but we're on a journey. It started in 2012. The changes are happening, and I'm incorporating as we speak. And the next few years, we'll still be getting there. Next slide, please, Ron.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Romic. I'm actually the district manager. I say I'm his support person, in other words, boss, if you want to look at it that way. But Rich and I work really close together for the quality of your program here in Downers Grove. And this slide here is just a comparison of what happened prior to and what's required. And in the far right corner is what it really means. And if you look at the fruits and vegetables, it's a reimbursable meal has to have a fruit or a vegetable or both on the plate for it to be a reimbursable meal for your district. And you can see that it's a half cup to three-fourths of a cup, and now it's, and I don't have my glasses, and this is really far. So, sorry about this. But it's larger portions of vegetables that are being served to the children, of fruits or vegetables. The grains, there are minimums and maximums that must be met. When I speak about school lunch, it's really, you know, it's not just a school lunch. It's an art and a science that's being put on paper, being cooked, and then presented to children that meet these requirements. So the normal school lunch lady of just serving food and making it in the kitchen and going, "Here it is," is totally different. And again, when he has a culinary background, and I'm so proud of Rich, but it is an art and science of being able to meet the requirements. And for our company to stay aggressively innovative, to be able to put things on a plate that children are going to be picking and choosing and eating versus throwing it away. If you can go to the next slide. The whole grains, I think the district is about 80% there. We only have to be 50% of the grain requirements, and your district is about 80% whole grain throughout the entire district. I have some districts that are 100%, and they want to be there. They've been 100%. And, you know, with Rich and I looking through and seeing what works here in Downers Grove, we're really comfortable with that 80% and know that we can flip that switch and go 20% and not have such a shock for your children when it becomes 100% grain. So he's working very diligently on that. If you look at the milk part of it, you can see that the, what that means in regards to the changes in the milk is that you need to have a fat-free 1% white milk and a fat-free flavored milk. Slight change on that, that's an easy one. I don't think the kids really mind about that one. And then the proteins, if you look at the minimum requirements, there are, again, you have a high school here, so the calories, the amount of calories that we need to have, the amount of proteins that we need to have, the amount of grains that we have to have, all of those have very specific categories that you need to achieve. I was just telling him that I was in an administrative audit in two of my other accounts. My 17 that I oversee in Illinois, and they had administrative reviews. And I've asked him, you have one coming up in Downers 58, but to make sure that he uses the resources of people that have been through that, to make sure of how we actually, on paper, based on what they actually do when they come to see your reimbursables as well, how we actually meet that and see if he's on target. And I know he is because he's following the menus. Again, I'm going to go back to the art and science. We, Rich and I, have people that are above us that work on all of our menuing, that work on taste testing it before it ever gets to the high schools or any of the schools that we are presenting our food to try to keep participation up. And that art and science is really, really important because these changes are probably not very popular with children if you have them in your school district. They're not very popular. Why do you want me to eat vegetables? Why do you want me to eat whole grain? I like white bread. It's poofier and everything. But our people that we work with are really working hard to make sure that we're doing everything possible to position ourselves to keep participation up. Because that will be a challenge when the sodium contents comes down and all the other changes that are going to be coming very soon down the line, which are regulated and not Airmark, but on USDA standards. Okay? And again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening as well. Next slide.
Next slide, Ron.
In this next four slides addressing the board and administration, the key is vendors and manufacturers are starting to catch up with us. And we've had some challenges as a food service provider in gauging the caloric content and the packaging. Here on this slide, you'll see that they've started to incorporate new whole grain manufacturing for this, I want to say this oatmeal bar here. And in regards to what it was before on cereals, we now incorporate this as an item at both high schools also. Next slide, please. This one is interesting. It's a, they actually, packaging from on the left side used to be a regular nacho chip. But when they tried to do the packaging and not have it so laminated, which they had to make it really close to, the RF stands for reduced fat. Lot of the students were apprehensive to see the big fat in the corner of the packaging. And this is where they came across an even keel in providing that. And our kids and students really appreciated. We have this in our vending machines as required, and we have this in our, both our à la carte program at both schools.
It's whole grain and it's 35% reduced fat, which is, you know, amazing that the vendors are being able to do that. Go ahead, Rich.
Thanks. This next one, addressing is simple Pop-Tarts, believe it or not. And all joking aside, Pop-Tarts are important. And believe it or not, I say that from a breakfast standpoint. We have kids who enjoy them in the machines. They're allowed to have them prior to breakfast time or when school starts. And here's on the right and the left, you can see how they've staged and manufactured the requirements on the right side to meet that need. Next slide, please, Ron. Believe it or not, this is another very popular one. The Chex Mix has gone more unique in regards to culture, environment, building requirements. And on this one on the right, Hot and Spicy is very popular with our kids. And believe it or not, it meets the requirement for fat content, and it's not considered a regular potato chip. It's less calories. Next slide. This one is really crucial, and I say this to the extent that you wouldn't believe it or not. We've reformulated with USDA requirements, and our manufacturer has two in regards to this cookie. It's a 51% wheat cookie. You would never notice it until I told you, and it was at the board this evening for dessert. We beat Carnival, we do oatmeal raisin, sugar, and chocolate chip, and it's very, very popular.
And I just wanted to mention, I wasn't here for the dinner that you had, but everything that you ate today at the dinner that Rich prepared was something that we serve at lunch. It was the whole grain, and again, you put it together, so you could speak to it. But everything had the whole grain in it, and it was very nutritious. And those are the types of options that the children have. So if they want to have a hamburger, cheeseburger, that's great. But if they want to eat healthier and they want to make those better choices, those are there as well. So I think it's, again, that balance of art and science. Any questions?
Question. What about kids with allergies and gluten-free menus? Do we?
Well, right now, we do in regards to, we accommodate. Unfortunately, in the size of both high schools in that, not to say that they're a minority, okay? And the part that we were working better on is communications. Stephanie and I and each building is working on addressing, making that available to those students. Right now, it's more of a communication piece to have those young men or young ladies know that we have that capability. The part that I have to watch on the other side of it is if I have it available and they don't come to us at lunchtime or they don't come at breakfast time, it's on the other turn where we do throw it away. In regards to, that's the even keel I have to find in regards to having those people not be afraid to come in and see us on a more gauging process.
A lot of times with people with allergies, it comes through the nurses department, so Rich is very aware. And there'll be times where a kid will have a salad that if they don't, if they're allergic to dairy and they don't want any cheese on their salad, that's something that the food service people would be able to connect with that individual and have a special salad that sits around. And you'll be surprised with some of the ladies and gentlemen that work in the food service. They'll say, "Oh, Johnny's here." And the kids and everybody that's there will go get Johnny's salad and bring it out and be able, so that we can specialize in some of those things. Because gluten and all of those allergies, peanut allergies and everything else, it's huge in every school that we're in. So it's a matter of communication with the nurses and also the food service department to make sure we can zone in on a quality meal that's going to fit that person's ability so that they don't have to bring it from home, so that they can eat at school. And they can feel part of going through the line and feeling not different than somebody else, even though they might have something different about them because they're allergic to something. So, again, it's the nurses and the food service to connect on that. You have that, right?
Yes, I got that, yes.
I have a follow-up to that. What about lactose intolerant kids? Is there a substitute for them?
Yes, yes, we do. But then exactly what Stephanie said, the nurses department relays that to me. Rich Rogus is a lactose-free, opportunity in regards to, we're seeing that more with free and reduced students significantly in regards to, that's an opportunity for the district. So to the extent that we don't ever turn that away or not take care of that. The commitment I have to address with Stephanie and each of those buildings with that individual is we want to have that availability of those options. Will they come or what's the expectation so they do come? So I meet that commitment and have it ready at that lunch period.
Yeah. It's all about good communication.
And I had one last question, and I know this, maybe somebody else can answer this. What about vending machines and soda pop?
Vending is turned off during lunch. It is about a competitive food, so it is required by state law that when lunch is being served, that the vending machines are turned off. And so they only can get food from the cafeteria, so that if they wanted to go eat chips for lunch, that's not an option. They figured out that kids are going to do that, but then they are turned on. But what kind of, you have different types of things in your vending, so you could speak to it.
Sure, sure. So to answer your question and addressing Dr. McDonald and Mr. Stalen both know, to the extent that they're off, is required, they can't be, they're a competitive food. And then the other thing that was really neat about that is we have the influx of that low sodium, of those baked chips or those grain candy bars, and bottled waters and 100% juice must be offered. That's all in the cafeteria, so we capture that opportunity while they're off.
Yeah. Afterwards, and kids that are going for sports programs that might want a pick-me-up that didn't bring something that could go, there are healthy options within that. And that is also regulated by the US, by the government too. So there's not, like, you can put all kinds of crazy stuff in there like the old days. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Couple of quick things. I am certain that in the dinner this evening, I consumed more than the calorie limit that was, you have here.
Probably portion sizes are the problem with that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I might have, probably could use a little help there. This is a wonderful presentation. The only thing that just, that's maybe concerning to me, and it's nothing you can do anything about, is the fact that students must take at least one serving. When we're, I forget which slide it was, but we're talking about vegetables and greens.
And a reimbursable meal.
And you wonder if a kid doesn't want to take it and you have to put it on their plate anyhow, what, I mean, what's the chance that we're eating it? Yeah, and it seems like a waste, and that's unfortunate.
Your district is an offer versus serve, so they have the, it's an offer, so they get a choice. And what Rich and his teams do at both high schools is to make sure that we have some great options out there. The juice, a bottle, a small container of juice, apple, grape, this, that's a fruit. So they can drink that, or they can take some carrots, or they can take some, you know, again, when you put broccoli against something, either hot broccoli or cold broccoli, that might not be, you'll be surprised how many kids take broccoli, but that might not be a very popular item. Well, guess what? We want to put some nice carrots with it that something's easy. It's, oh, I can eat carrots or celery. And again, you can help me out. But the fruit, a whole fruit, sometimes even cutting it makes it a little easier than having somebody have to peel it. If they don't take a fruit or a vegetable, they can still get a meal. It's just a matter of it's not a reimbursable meal for the district, so you can't claim it. So then it becomes à la carte. And the way that we price things is, and it's not to force them to make it or take it, but it helps them. It will cost them a dollar, how much is a hamburger?
A dollar is, hamburger is actually a $2.
$2 just for a hamburger, and a meal's how much?
A meal's $2.50.
So for $2.50, if they get a milk and a fruit, that is a reimbursable. For $2, they're going to pay a very high premium price for something that's à la carte. So we try to price it to get their attention, to say, "Hey, take the fruit. It's easy. You can drink that juice and it's easy." And that helps the district as well to cover the program and all the costs.
So to follow up on this, do we ever, do we ever take a look at what's going in the garbage and how much is in there? And is that a way that we kind of measure some of the, it seems like kind of a strange way to measure the success. But, I mean, if you've got a lot going in the garbage, that's probably telling you something.
We, with the changes that have been made that are forced upon every school district, I can tell you that we talk about the trash a lot. And we talk about the things that the kids like or don't like to eat. But that's why it's, you know, and again, you have all of those greens and green and leafy vegetables that you have to put out. Now, the beans, I mean, you know, kids, how many times you think a kid's going to take beans? Beans have to be offered, pinto beans, black bean, brown, I mean, all of them have to be offered. So when you put those out there, what we try to do is we don't put a big, huge tray of them and say, "Oh, look," and then nobody takes them, and we don't do them. So we put a smaller amount out so that if a kid wants them and they truly say, "I want them," then you know they're going to eat them. So we try to portion the amount that we put out, that it's still offered, we're compliant, but it's not going to be wasteful. And hopefully, the kids that, you know, we talk about trying to get to take a fruit or a vegetable and educate them on a good choice are not going to be throwing it in the trash.
So just, I hate to press, but in terms of, how do you, how do you monitor this, though? I mean, are you going, are you every day, every week, every month? I mean, how do you, you're measuring what's in the garbage cans or you're somehow taking, I'm just wondering, how do we do that?
My job is to come and view service and, you know, work with my FSD and watch. And so we'll stand there and we'll watch the kids go through the line, and then we'll watch them, the trash cans are usually in certain places. And it doesn't matter in elementaries, middle schools, or high schools. And I'll just stand there and watch. Or I'll go up and talk to the kids and say, you know, "Gosh, you got that on your plate. What are you going to do with it?" Or I'll know what they're going to do with it and say, "Why did you eat it? Why'd you take it if you didn't?" So I ask kids, and I also stand by the trash cans and just watch it happen too. So, again, the quality of it has to be good, and it has to be really good choices, and that's what we're working on, so that doesn't happen. But I can guarantee you, are there things being thrown out? Yes. Kids are going to do it. But I can tell you here, a lot of people don't take the meals. They don't get the fruits or vegetables. They do, some of them, but one of the challenges I have for him is there's a lot of kids going through that line with à la carte. They're willing to pay for that lunch or that item with not having to throw it out. So maybe they're conscious about it and not wanting to waste it. And I think it's a challenge that I think we can do better with the district to try to get the kids to try to take a juice. That's easy to drink. I mean, what's your favorite, apple, grape, orange?
Orange.
I mean, that's easy.
So this is something that may be a focus for you then going forward.
Yes, it is.
Right. But then add to what Stephanie said, we have a five-week cycle lunch menu, okay? And it gets down to the, really where she challenges me to dig down, we analyze. Last five weeks, we go back to that cycle. What was it up against? Was it snowing outside? How many field trips were here? What giveaways? What assemblies did we have going on? And then we make actually forecasts based on our counts on what we know through the POS. I know exactly how many services, how many portions to serve, what's left over and what's wasted. We recycle on what can we do for forecasting on the next time.
And how did broccoli go against, you know, cucumbers? How did this go against that? What was, you know, how many took this and how many took that? You know, what happened? You know, what happened with it? So, so that we can get better at it.
So are you, are you also trying to, I'm going to say, develop maybe different spaghetti sauces or something that has more vegetables in it versus just the tomato sauce and meat and, you know, some of those things so that you can incorporate more of the vegetables into something? I'm not saying hide them, but, but not as prevalent, let's say, to encourage.
We have a menu team. We have a chef that does everything, and they vet it out. They actually have a bunch of people that do taste testings and everything. The amount of vegetables that you would have to put into a sauce in order to have it be a vegetable is, it wouldn't happen in a sauce for that. You need a, what?
You need one cup.
You need one cup of vegetables to make it a meal in a high school. So to put that many vegetables in a sauce and be able to serve it, it's not going to happen. So you have to have those on the side. But our menu team is working very hard. I was telling him, and I know we've got five minutes, so I'm trying to keep it quick. I went to a party the other day, and it was a macaroni and cheese party. And I emailed one of my people, and I said, "Can you send me the macaroni and cheese parties? We have a taco macaroni and cheese, which is fabulous." And we had like four different, a chili one, a taco, and everything. And I went with some friends, and I said, "All right, here, pick one." And they picked the taco one. Of 19 different types, we came in second place of this macaroni party I went to. And I was like, you know, I told him I was so proud. I wish we would have been first, but the first one was really, really good. Second place out of 19 wasn't bad. And that's where when we have these menus that our people are doing, and the kids are like looking at it going, "Oh, I'm not sure," we taste test. Put it out there, let them taste it. Today I was in a school, and I said, "Tomorrow's breakfast. Whatever's hot, chop it up, put it up, get it ready for today, and serve it to them today and tell them this is what's on the breakfast for tomorrow. Don't serve what's left over today and say, 'Hey, next week sometime, this is here.' Do it today for tomorrow." And then they go, "Hey, I'm going to go for breakfast because that was pretty good." So we have to be smarter about how we try to educate them, how we share our food with them to show the quality of it. You know, because what are you going to remember about a week ago? What is it going to happen? No, this is tomorrow. Kids are right here. Too busy.
But let's add to that, my opportunity and challenges with Stephanie is I'm here as a representative for the district in regards to a business opportunity. And I have to find the right foods that they like, okay? So to the extent, I don't ever settle. Regards to be a chicken poppers, which happen to be very popular here, to sizzling salads and made-to-order bars. So I concentrate on that with my teams. And mind you, I take the time to make sure through patience and education, they understand what's important for those kids. And then we replicate it the next time, or we take it off the menu if it doesn't work.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. We really appreciate the presentation.
Great presentation and a great dinner.
Important stuff to our, important stuff to our kids, right? Our students, this is, so.
Of all the complaints, the lunch is the biggest complaint, you know? It's not about certain classes that they're taking, it's lunch.
It's lunch.
And actually.
That's what she wanted to hear. That's what she wanted to hear, Terry.
She doesn't complain. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for making your help.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. McDonald, the communications monthly reports?
Thank you, Dr. Cupka. As part of the strategic plan, we are trying to improve communications between internally in the school district, between the school district and our community, and our parents. The last several years, we've been keeping data, analyzing that data to give us insights about how our communications are working. That's been Mrs. Browning's responsibility, and she's going to make a report tonight about what the metrics we have gathered and what we've learned from that. So, Mrs. Browning, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, how do I advance the slides?
That's the button.
All right. This one?
Yep.
Okay, it's not working. Okay, well, we'll give it.
Oh, here, sir.
Come in.
Without it turned on.
Well, I'm excited to talk to you all tonight about our communications program and all that's gone on in the fall. It's been a really busy fall. Want to share some social media insights with you as well as metrics for our other communication channels. Talk about a couple of things that have just been recently launched and projects in the work for 2014, which is coming up pretty soon, as it turns out. Before we get to social media, though, before Facebook, there was face-to-face. And most of our communications growth has been through social media, but of course, personal contact is still important. We had the first of our three district open houses back in November. I thought it was really nice to see all of the conversations that happened. We met people where they are. We had about, well, I would say probably 50 people milling about and having those conversations. And I think just as important as the conversations with our community and our parents are the conversations with each other that we have. We don't get an opportunity really to have administrator and board member interaction, so that's kind of a nice perk of that as well. So we have more district open houses coming up in March and coming up in May, so we'll continue to promote those and assess how those have been and how our community feels about that with our survey that we'll do in the spring. So, meeting people where they are, they're pretty much on social media, I'd say right now. It continues to grow in importance. And I will say that as many districts are still grappling with whether or not to even go for social media or have a presence, ours is continuing to grow. And just a side note, the tragedy that happened Friday in Colorado, the, I went to their website just to see how they were handling that, and it was taken down. It was just overwhelmed by traffic, and they were diverting people to their Facebook page. And so that was a nice avenue, and we've used that in the past as well, just to direct people to Facebook. So it's just another avenue to communicate with people. So I think that's pretty important. Side note. I also want to note, before I get into the statistics of what I manage in the communications department, there are over 60 accounts throughout the district that different teachers have, department chairs. They communicate with their students and with their parents. I'm using those. So I just want to talk about the, there's a whole network out there, and that's really beneficial to all of us as we grow interest in the district. So, we all share our news. So, onto Facebook likes. And I will say, you know, my metrics, I didn't have to go through the trash to get my metrics, actually, so, but. my metrics, actually, so, but I'm not completely sophisticated with numbers and with measuring. There, there's just a whole, you know, study, people research, you know, they're experts in this. So, this is more general, it shows me trends, am I spending my time in the right places type of thing. So, Facebook has grown, we're up to one hundred and sixteen likes on the district, but more important are the schools. So, north are up to fifteen hundred and south, you'll see that little spike up there, and I just wanna note that we had been tracking the south high page along with the activities and athletics page, which was really geared to students, and we stopped doing that, so that's where that drop happened. So if we add in those six hundred people, it would track right along north, it's just really neck and neck. But our three primary sites are these three, three Facebook pages. So we're up to, if you, if you count the Face, Facebook for Activities and Athletics at south, we're up to over thirty-two hundred people liking us. Twitter's channel is continuing to grow in popularity, we now have three hundred and eighty-seven followers, that's up seventy percent since last year. We also just recently established Downers North and Downers South because people weren't immediately identifying District Ninety-Nine with the schools, and we found that out kind of the hard way when, during the ABC flyover. We'll talk about that in a second. People were following a student-led channel, thinking that that was the official district channel, so, a school channel. So we quickly established that north and south channels. And some examples of tweets, we'll talk about the board meeting, so I just tweeted that. We talk about the concerts, hey, follow us on High School Cube, the concert's being broadcast live. So, we're continuing to learn about it and retweet each other's tweets and, and grow, grow this channel. Just quickly, some social media channels, moments, rather. You know, two big moments happened this fall at north, the, the ABC flyover, there were over ten thousand views on that post. I don't know if you followed that or voted. Over ten thousand people, unique people, voted for North High during that, and I, I know social media was a huge part of that, it's just a very powerful tool. We lost, but came in close. I know. Scott was part of that. Also, obviously, the governor came, that sparked a lot of conversations and a lot of positive momentum. People were very proud of their alma mater to say, hey, I went to North High, and so that's really contagious, that positive positivity. Along those same lines, alumni connections fits naturally with the social media, and it will continue to help us grow our alumni base. We sent over seven thousand emails during the fall to both North High and South High alumni, inviting them to homecoming activities and also inviting them to the newly established Facebook account. So we have a few more on north and south, but these are brand new, and as we have the Alumni Awards of Excellence in the fall, those are, that's going to happen in the spring for north and in the fall for south. I just see that continuing to grow. And also, I just, I just today received an email from someone who said, hey, why don't we have a teacher retiree or retirees of District Ninety-Nine Facebook account? So, I know Joanne will sign up for that. Another important channel is our YouTube channel, our monthly board meetings. If you can believe it, time flies, it's been two years to this meeting that we've had that up and running. So we're tracking that. You'll see each bar represents a workshop meeting, the regular business meeting, and the awards. And obviously, the awards are very popular with the students 'cause they can go back and see their time of fame, and we've tracked over nine thousand views of all the meetings altogether. So that's nine thousand people who are not here in the audience that are out there watching. Also, side note, we have the High School Cube video channel, and that South High concert that was broadcast has almost received a thousand views, so, from Thursday night, so, as it continues. Now, just to review some of our other channels, and I said old media, just because it's, it's on the decline, it's, it's not like social media, it's not going up and it causes us to say, well, what's, you know, is this the best use of our time? We publish the newsletters once a month at the beginning of the month, we have an interactive view of it as well as a straight PDF. I'm unable to measure the PDF, so the, these are the numbers for the interactive. So maybe people, some people, it's not their favorite view of the newsletter, and I understand that, but, so maybe that accounts for some of that, but we'll, we'll see what our survey says if people still want to receive the newsletters. The website visitors, kind of like the newsletters, it starts to taper off after the beginning of the school year. But again, every student in the district and every staff member enters their workday through the website, so that accounts for our volume as well. As far as media coverage, we have strong coverage from really four main publications, Trip Local, My Suburban Life, which used to be the reporter, it's now called My Suburban Ri- Life, The Patch, and The Bugle. And we're continuing to publish those op-ed articles, that one's up there by Scott. A recent one came from Gina, and we have one on deck for Rod, author, it'll be out in January talking about our technology, but just another way to reach all the people who are in the community, who have no ties to the school, and it's, it's very cost-effective for us to do, do that way. New projects briefly that we've launched, at the beginning of the year, started publishing Board of Education highlights, and this is just right, shortly after the meeting, as a companion piece to the video that's published, or, yeah, posted a couple of days after the meeting, so we've tied a link to specific spots within that. So, we'll see if people like that, if people are chomping at the bit to read highlights, but we post that on our Facebook page, and we'll see popularity of that. We also just posted an interactive map, it's on the district site right now, if you go to Boundaries and Maps, you're able to just enter an address, enter your own address, and see exactly what the district boundaries are and the north-south boundaries, and it's very enlightening to see that and to see all the associated districts, and it just gives a clearer understanding to people, I think, of really the large, larger community that we serve. And then we're continuing to work on the mobile app, we've run into a few obstacles, but I'm going to be excited to launch this in, I, I hope, early January, that that'll come up and connect people. You'll see down at the bottom the Facebook, Twitter links that you can click on, and you'll be able to see all the different, like, sports teams that are associated with each school, so you can just have a clear understanding of all the different people who communicate at the district. And then finally, just a few things in the works for twenty-fourteen, we have this intranet, so this is what staff members will see as they enter into the internet. I, I don't know, I think you're on the list for On Your Mark, the weekly newsletter that Mark publishes every Monday, so this is gonna bring it to life. You know, we're gonna be able to post pictures there, all the announcements, and just share information. I hope, my hope is to bring people closer and to increase understanding of what everybody's doing and sharing information. Also gonna be further developing our key communicators program, we have over a hundred people that we're sending our newsletter to who have no relation, so reaching out to them and seeing how they feel about being closer to us. Let's see, we have media training sessions, that's part of the strategic plan, so we're, that's just in the works right now, just in development. And then finally, again, the communication survey in the spring, so that'll be two years since the first time we did it. So, I'm excited to see what those results are and just, again, giving better direction to us and what we can do to improve our communications. So, that's kind of a, an overview of everything that's going on. Any questions?
Great presentation.
Questions?
Will the app cover both, both, Apple and Android?
I believe so. I believe so. I think that's true.
I have an Android, so...
Okay, we'll make sure that...
Me, too.
Yeah, me, too.
Me, too.
No, it's avail, I will provide you information about that.
Some of them work for Apple only and...
Yeah, right. Right. That's a good question.
I would just...
Actually, most of us do have Androids.
Okay.
I would just like to take a moment, since we were talking about the coverage that we have, acknowledge that we do have a few reporters who come here, meeting after meeting after meeting.
Don Rhodes from the Tribune, for example.
Thank you, and, you know, commend you on your unbiased reporting. Sometimes we like what you write, sometimes not so much, but that's the way it's supposed to be.
I always like it, Nancy. I couldn't resist it.
The night is young, Mike.
Um, I, if I could say, one thing I don't wanna lose in the, the insight about what's happening in Colorado and how Facebook became something, that's something that we wanna keep in mind, I think, in, in terms of our own crisis management.
That's a good point.
That would be, that would be some, you know, that would be something we would end up doing, too, more than likely. So knowing that ahead of time is, I mean, huge. So, thank you.
I did wanna say, too, we, we were at the, the conference, and I had the opportunity to sit at a table with many, well, about nine school board presidents, and they said the most important person that's been hired in the last several years, almost all of them had, had brought on directors of communication, and how invaluable, maybe not the most important person, don't get it.
Nancy, you're really stepping in that. You might wanna step on your head.
But just, there was consensus on how important a role that was and how grateful, and, and for things like emergence, just getting the word out, but also for emergencies, it's a good point.
Everyone's so busy that they forget what they're doing, that people care about what they're doing, and they want to hear about what's happening in the school. So, it's good to have these, this infrastructure in place, and I feel like we have a strong one, and we're continuing to build that infrastructure, but that's, that's so important to have, and a lot of schools don't have that.
It would be good to have a sign.
Say that a little louder, excuse me, maybe, maybe everybody didn't hear it?
What was that? It would be very nice if we had a sign.
That would help with our communications, too, wouldn't it?
To explain to our community.
That would be a great idea.
All the wonderful things we do, and that would be something...
Moving on.
Maybe we could do something about that sometimes.
Technology.
I'd like to say, Dr. Kupka, that we, our communications at this point is light years ahead of where it was.
Light years.
Light years ago. And I think there were...
That's for sure.
There was a time when I first came to the district where we were criticized about our lack of communication, and I, I hear that very seldom now. I think we have expanded greatly our capacity, our sources, and Mrs. Browning has had a major role in that.
That's for sure.
Would like to acknowledge that.
Thank you. You're pushing.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to technology plan update.
Again, this is a part of the strategic plan, moving forward with embellishing instructional technology in the district. There's been a group of people working on this now for several years, this is a critical year, and I've asked Mr. Rousseau, who's, has a leadership role in this tech planning group, to give us a brief oral report. So, Mr. Rousseau?
Thanks, Mark. Boy, Jill, you're a hard act to follow. I don't have all the pretty stuff here, so we'll just...
Say something. I feel bad for him.
I'll give you a, I'll give you kind of a brief overview of, of what's here, and then we can talk about anything we'd like as well. I wanted to start just by rearticulating the, the goal that was set forth at the beginning of the year, in terms of establishing a vision for instructional technology, the idea of faculty and student access, and dealing solely, or primarily with instruction and what's necessary to support that. And as Mark said, it's several years, actually, we've been working on this, not this plan specifically, but making the pretty major infrastructure upgrades a number of years ago, and just more, more recently, this, this summer and fall, getting down and dirty into the planning. And because there's such a heavy instructional focus, Gina and Scott, as cabinet members, are integral in this committee and involved in this group, as well as our building leadership in the instructional area as well. Teachers are involved, initially from a committee of teachers that we have, and you'll see where we're going to be involving more as we go a little bit farther. Primarily, we've been looking at high-level things. Initially, we visited some high school districts in the area that are in varying stages of developing one-to-one programs, where, where they're giving students mobile technology devices of some type. Everybody has a different idea in terms of what that device should be. And we've learned a lot from those districts. We've learned that this is a heck of an undertaking, that we really need to do our homework, make sure we, we, we talk to everyone that needs talking to, get all the input that we need. We've put a framework together for what we think is important, what are important parts of the planning process, starting with a vision, going down to the instructional and professional development components, making sure that we're ready from a technology standpoint, and then actually looking at what those devices are, and how do we actually implement that and fund those devices. Some of what's next for us is we're gonna continue visiting other districts, but we're really going to include many more teachers in that process. We really wanna not only learn about the mechanics of the program and how do they choose to handle the funding issues, and what happens when the units break, and those type things. We wanna get teachers talking to teachers so they can understand from a learning and instructional level what, what's, what's different, what, what was a challenge, what was a success, so we can build the program more really around, around that. Similarly, we need to connect with, with our own constituents, our own teachers, students, parents, and, and, and we have some activities sketched out for starting in second semester to do that as well. Coupling with that, a pilot program that we're looking at to, to actually put some devices in, in students' hands in a, in a prescribed, in a small manner, but in a prescribed manner, so we get an idea of what's it like to manage those devices physically, what are the instructional, what are the instructional implications, just so we can gather a lot more data about how to best move, move on from that. A few of my observations that, that, that I wanted to share with you were it's just amazing to me what a immense process this is in terms of trying to make sure that everybody and everything is really included in the right way and at the right time. And from the districts that we've talked to and we've visited, it's obvious to me that virtually everybody is talking about this, making plans for it, already implementing it in some way. So we're all heading in the same direction, but every single district is doing it in a different way, at a different pace, and so we, we basically, I can't emphasize enough, we just need to pay attention to what other people are doing, but determine what's the right thing to do for us and, and for our students. And like, I think you've probably heard me say before that, that this, although I'm the tech guy, this really isn't a technology initiative at all, it's really a learning initiative. It's, it's about giving students a, a tool that they can use for their, for their assistance in, in, in learning, and the technology is just the vehicle that kinda helps that occur. And I, I say that, though, there's, 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 there's this continuum that I like to think about in terms of how, how districts, and ultimately, how we will look at this as well. One side of that continuum looks at learning and instruction and says that before we move forward with any program like this, we just need to really spend quality time looking at how should learning be different, how should instruction be different, what professional development do we need to put into place to make that happen, what digital resources are out there that we need to line up and get ready to replace text that we might think is a good choice. So, basically, prepare all of that before we get to the point of looking at devices and putting devices in kids' hands. The other side of that continuum that I see is thinking about the world that students live in today, and I use the analogy that, that technology to students is like lights are to us. I, I walk in any room and any building, anywhere, and I kind of expect and assume, I turn on the light switch and the lights are gonna work. Students access anything, anytime, anywhere, and just assume that they're gonna find the answer, they're gonna connect with the person that they need to. So, part of that says, that's the world that they live in, but when they walk in the school system, all of a sudden, that changes, you know, 'cause they don't have that access, that, that might not make, make sense. So, that side of the continuum says, just give kids devices, and everything else will kinda, kind, kind of catch, catch up. I don't think either one of those extremes is right, but I think it'll be up to us to determine where we fall in that. Do the necessary preparation and, and homework and development on either side of that and pick the point in the continuum. Do the necessary preparation and, and homework and development on either side of that and pick the point in the continuum. So, that's, that's really where we're at. We're, we're, we're zoning in on, on a pilot this, this spring to get some more answers. We're focusing heavily on the, those vision questions, the instructional questions and involving the right people in that process. It certainly isn't just, just me. I'm speaking to you, but there's many other people that certainly are much more, more, um, involved with that aspect of it.
Wow. Any questions or comments?
Rod, has your committee talked at all with officials in District 58 to see how they're piloting programs and things have been working?
I, I did. I had several conversations with, uh, Scott Meach, who was the technology director there up until about a month, month ago, and he, he recently left, um, left there. I did, about a week or so ago, I talked to the tech director over at, at, at District 66, I, I, I believe. And in conversations with them, what I would like to do is after winter break, get us all together really in a room. Some, some districts are farther along than others, but I know from other conversations I've had that everybody's talking about it. It's, it's on everybody's radar, so.
I decided them specifically because I know that they're, bless you, moving closer toward, um, they've been piloting some things over the last two years and I think might be, they're moving much closer to having a child with the device, tablet device. And so, if they're ready and they're coming to our high schools, you know, that we might want to look at that sooner than later.
Right, right, yeah, that's, that, that is definitely.
Even though we may not, as professionals, be ready for that transition.
Right, right, right.
Well, I know my fifth grade daughter in 58 is in a one-to-one, in a class. And, uh, if I remember right from my, the literature that I was given, the, the plan is that this year there's a third, next year there's two thirds, and the year after that they're, they're hoping to be one-to-one throughout the whole district. So, um, that's definitely, so, so these, these are students that are going to be showing up on our doorstep, expecting this is, this is the way that they're going to be learning, so.
District 68 also working?
No, I, I haven't talked with anyone from District 68 yet, but I'll be reaching out to all of them after the break.
I thought I heard maybe they were.
No, that's really where that important aspect of where that, where, where we fall in that, I mean, I can tell you even within our committee as we process, there's some pretty interesting conversations happen. There, there are some people that are ready to go tomorrow and there's others that, that really want to go, go slow, so we're, we're definitely, we have all voices represented. It's, it's a matter of trying to flesh it all out.
Yeah. It is. Wow. Anything else for technology plan? Teacher appraisal?
Good luck.
Thank you, Rod. Yeah, oh.
Teacher appraisal?
I'd also add that Rod has provided tremendous leadership on a, on a number of different technology adaptations over the years and he is performing in the same method. Very methodical, very, uh, studious, uh, very much interested in what the teachers are doing as well as what the students are doing, so I do appreciate his leadership as well. You don't have to clap for him twice. This is, the next item is also a strategic plan. You're getting a big strategic plan dose tonight. Uh, teacher appraisal, or otherwise known as teacher evaluation. Pete is going to make a presentation because in his role as assistant superintendent for HR, he plays a major role in leading this entire process. So, Pete, you are up.
Thanks, Mark. One of the things that I thought might be helpful in the last year or two, we've had so much conversation about the state changing the ratings from three to four. We've talked about the training system that was set up in the summer of 2012 for all department chairs and administrators to go through. We've talked about Charlotte Danielson and the language and, you know, sometimes we forget about the day-to-day, um, work that goes on between teachers, department chairs and building administrators to foster growth in our teachers. So, I thought I would share again this evening or review, um, information that pertains to the actual process that we follow here in District 99. So, you can see all the work that goes into this from the classroom teacher to the department chair to the designated administrator. And so, I put together for you two different charts to show what we do with our non-tenured staff members. We differentiate between those who come to us with less than four years and those who come to us with more than four years. We used to say tenured, but we started to see a pattern a few years back where somebody was maybe two or three years into a position in a district and then due to economic situations, they got riffed, they were hired by another district, did a year or two there, got riffed again. And so, they were coming to us with five, six, seven years of experience, but no previous tenure, and then we were putting them in the same group as people that were fresh out of college in their first job. So, we, we, you know, differentiated those two groups a little bit. I won't go through and read all of these to you. You've got them in front of you, you had a chance to look at them. Uh, but note that we do formal observations and informal contacts with all of the teachers. And the informal contacts can be a classroom visit where they pop in to watch a class unannounced and then the teacher or the department chair administrator, whoever may be, um, meet afterwards to talk about it. It might be a meeting to talk about the Danielson language. It might be a meeting to talk about the teacher's goals for the year. The informal contact has a wide range of things that people do in that aspect. Formal observations are those where we have our pre-observation conference, the actual observation itself and the post-observation. And I'll talk a little bit more in detail about each of those steps as we go further along. So, um, you know, we started off with the less than four years, then here's the one with more than four years. I often get questions about part-time and we do evaluate our part-time teachers just like we do our full-time teachers. And what we do in terms of our differentiation is more along how big of a part their part-time is, as well as how many years they've been with us in a part-time capacity. And so, again, you can see how we differentiate those. Uh, but we believe that all those roles should be evaluated and have the opportunity for growth to occur because there's always the potential that somebody who's part-time this year could become full-time next year based on enrollment, student choice, um, for course selection, et cetera. Uh, then we have our tenured staff. As, as you know, the vast majority of our staff are excellent or proficient, so they have a biannual observation every two years. So, there's an observation done by both their department chair as well as a designated administrator. Uh, just a quick point of clarification, a designated administrator means that the principal, any of the associate principals, any of the assistant principals, the teachers are kind of divvied up, if you will. And so, Steve Bild could be a designated administrator for a segment of the teachers at South, Ed Schwartz has a chunk, Georgia Hash, Luke, et cetera. Uh, so that's what it means to be a designated administrator. Most of the time, as our non-tenured staff are going through the cycle, they'll have a different designated administrator each year that allows for different perspectives on what's being done. It eliminates any bias concern that a staff member may have with a designated administrator. So, just to, you know, kind of clarify who serves in that role, if you will. Tenured staff who receive a needs improvement go on to what we call a professional development plan, where you can see there's more intense observations being done for that tenured staff member than the group that's directly above that. Currently in District 99, we have one staff member on a professional development plan this year. And then, when unfortunately we get to an unsatisfactory rating, now we're talking about a remediation plan. And that's something that's completely different. The, uh, process itself, the pre-observation, generally we start with the designated administrator or department chair, who's ever making the next observation of a teacher, will send electronically a pre-observation form that the teacher fills out in advance of the pre-observation conference. And there's eight questions on that document, talks about the learning objectives for the lesson, the sequence of activities, the type of students that are in there, special considerations that the observer should know about a particular class or students in that class. And so, it's a good jumping off point for conversation between the two sides in advance of the actual observation itself. So, as an observer, I'm not walking in cold and really don't have a clue as to what I should be expected to see that day. Uh, we've had conversation where the teacher's telling me, here are some things I'd like for you to look for while you're in there today. Maybe it's how well I do calling on all the students, maybe it's my proximity to, um, parts in the classroom, maybe it's how I've sequenced my activities, that I scaffold the material in a way that allows student comprehension to occur. So, those are all the kinds of conversations we're able to have at the pre-observation conference itself. Then we have the actual observation and the teach, the department chair or the administrator goes to the classroom, watches the entire lesson, and then more often than not, we share with them immediately following the observation, the notes that we took during that observation. So, you can see all the things that that observer saw take place during the lesson, not just a play-by-play, but also, you know, some of the other side issues and questions that they might have, which we then use to formulate one to three reflective questions that we ask the teacher in advance of the post-observation conference. So, they have an opportunity to think about some things that the observer noted or posed a question about. They're able to come in then prepared to the post-observation conference to have a dialogue about those kinds of things. And I will say anecdotally, what we hear from everybody is this is where the real growth is occurring for our teachers, the dialogue that we have around these reflective questions. And the teachers do a terrific job of spending a lot of time, uh, putting thought to answering those questions before we have the post-observation conference. I, I would say if you were to put together some kind of survey and ask the staff to rate things that they believe to be the most important components of this entire process, this would probably come out as number one, um, in the selection.
Can I, you know, can you give me example of a reflective question then?
Sure. Um, I, I attend a lesson and the students are doing some kind of cooperative learning activity and I may not know necessarily what roles we're giving to the students because some of that may have been worked on in previous lessons. So, I may say, as I moved around from group to group, I noticed that there really were only one or two students talking.
Okay.
During that portion of time. Was that by design in the roles that they were playing or was there something else that we could have done to have more voices heard? And there, sometimes there's a very logical explanation and it makes sense and you go, okay, I get it. Sometimes it's, maybe that's the kind of thing that we need to look at to do differently moving forward. Maybe the roles weren't articulated as well as they should be, should have been and one voice dominated the entire time.
Thank you, that helps.
Yeah, it, it could be, you know, questions about how they scaffolded the activities, you know, why this before that.
Mm-hmm.
There's a, there's a whole host of things that we may pose during that time period.
Are those questions developed together with the teacher and the observer or?
Not for the post-observation. That's, that's simply the observer posing questions for the teacher to think about, respond to at the actual post-observation conference.
Then they discuss them in the post.
And then they discuss them there, absolutely.
Okay.
So, then we talk about the, at the actual post-observation conference, they have the dialogue about the, the notes that were taken, the reflective questions, as well as what the teacher says. I mean, there are a lot of times you'll have a post-observation conference and you've got those two, three ideas that you gave them in advance and they come in and they have something else that they want to share with you or make note of or something that you thought went fine, so you didn't even mention it and they're questioning, did you like how I handled that? Could I, you know, should I have done this a little bit differently? Um, you know, we just have terrific dialogue occurring during this post-observation conference. And then, you know, a draft is shared and then after the conference is completed, now the observer finalizes the Danielson rubrics that you've seen at, at previous meetings. Those documents all get signed, sent to the appropriate places, et cetera. So, that's what's happening during the year, leading up to the summative that we have to do then in the spring. And as you know, those dates have been moved up in order to meet state guidelines. Uh, right now, our goal is to have all summatives concluded for the vast majority of our staff prior to spring break. There are always things that occur with illnesses and, you know, unforeseen circumstances that will cause us to do a few of them after spring break, but generally we'll try to get all of this done, uh, before. Whereas, not too many years ago, we were conducting most of our summative conferences in May for our tenured staff and some of those that were further along in the non-tenured and then our first and second year were kind of April conversations as we were going through the whole sectioning process and determining FTE for the following year. Uh, so, in the summative appraisal process, this is a combined collaborative effort between teacher, department chair, and again, designated administrator. And so, there are conversations that occur, kind of the year in review, there are opportunities for the teachers to provide evidence of areas that maybe weren't noted during observations, things that they want to make sure the department chair, the designated administrator are aware of, things like how they communicate with home and families, uh, the kinds of things that they do for the building and the district in terms of, um, giving back or giving, you know, more time. So, there are a lot of conversations that occur, some are face-to-face, some are done electronically. So, that's what we tried to capture here in some of these slides. For the non-tenured teachers, we also share and talk about the portfolio that they're asked to complete. Then the, um, department chair will put the draft of the summative document together that gets shared with the designated administrator. The designated administrator then, you know, adds to that after reviewing the notes from the year of the various observations, the informal contacts, the draft, and then that gets completed, it gets sent to the teacher in advance of the summative conference. And then at the summative conference, then they have conversation, um, they, designated administrator assigns a rating, we sign the document and again, copies are, um, sent to all the appropriate people. So, that's kind of what we're trying to capture here in, in these last few slides.
Thank you.
I didn't put in the questions slide here, but I'd be happy to entertain questions from the group.
Do you have a brief update on, on any committee work that's being done that's looking at the appraisal, that 30% piece that's going to be coming in very shortly, the teacher appraisal?
Yeah, we have, um, purposely not looked at that quite yet. There is some talk that that may get delayed again in terms of the actual implementation for the school year because they may look to tie it into the PARC assessment. So, we do have an appraisal committee that meets regularly and we've been spending more of our time working on kind of examples for the various components, trying to clean up misconceptions that staff still have about what the language means and the rubrics and the various boxes. Right now, we're meeting roughly monthly, um, working in that area and that we know we're going to get to a point, we'll have to convene a different committee. And once you convene that group, you have 120 days to finalize your plan of how you're going to implement student growth or defaults to the state. So, we're kind of watching what everybody else is doing because we don't want to start too soon and have our clock tick and then get to a point where we're going to have to change based on other changes that are being made outside of our process.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
No.
Just, okay.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
This is, how does this compare from a time standpoint from the way things used to be? Is it more time-consuming? Is it, intuitively, I think it must be.
It's definitely more time-consuming. Uh, there's, there's more writing that's occurring, both the part of the teacher as well as the observer. I think we're having better conversations than we had previously, but it's clearly more work than we once were doing.
As long as the outcome is worth it, I guess. Remains to be seen, right? Thank you.
Sure. Freedom of information requests?
Yes, Dr. Cuppy, we had two, uh, freedom of information requests in the last month. Both were fulfilled by Mr. Staler.
Thank you. Consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that any member of the board would like to discuss further? We're looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Terry moves, Julia seconds.
Terry Kavasich. Aye. Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Keith Wettun.
Aye.
Pavanado.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, moving on to the recommendations for action, approval of curriculum proposal?
Uh, this is approval of proposals the board heard in the workshop meeting earlier this month.
Okay. Were there any amendments to those proposals?
Um, I believe we're, we have a list, uh, there's a list of proposals to be, to be approved in the motion. motion.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion to approve the 2014, 2015 curriculum proposals for science, CTE, fine arts, and mathematics as presented.
I second it.
Okay. Mike motions, Rick seconds.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Rick Pabano.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Terry Pabesich.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye.
We've passed intergovernmental agreements?
I'll let Mr. Stalen talk about this agreement and he's been the architect of it.
Architect. Well, I'm the caretaker of it. The architect.
Back off from.
In 2000, May of 2000, it was several years after property tax caps had been put in place and schools were identifying a change in the approach that schools took to fighting appeals of assessment. And there was no longer any financial incentive to a school to fight for their own resources, assessment challenges by taxpayers. And prior to that, a school had a tax rate that was set at a certain level and any change or reduction in EAV was a direct negative impact on the financial resources coming to that school. So, but it was bothersome to many of us to see some challenges to assessments because there was no financial support given by schools and no fighting of challenging those or intervening in those appeals. There were more liberties taken by taxpayers and in fact, a lot of attorneys have made themselves very wealthy by just filing assess challenges because, and now there's no one to combat it other than the assessor themselves. And they were getting somewhat overwhelmed by that and eventually have built up their own resources in that regard. But there was, there were also the some that are clearly, we just feel are not fair and someone just taking advantage of it, trying to cut their assessment in half, even without an appraisal, just going in and challenging it. And so there was a lot of negotiating that goes on at the assessor's. But back to the schools, there was, it was a decision that we wanted to form a consortium. We felt, I actually had seen this in other districts and discussed this with some of the feeder districts, asked if they would want to do that. Everybody had the same feeling, yes, we want to know what's going on in the assess values. We want to know that the assessments are fair to everybody. And by these large, so many times corporate taxpayers having their assessments dropped was basically spreading more of the liability or the cost onto residential and other smaller commercial entities. And so that's really what we're talking about, that's where the biggest ones are. In the 13 years since then, we didn't, we had one, and it was just recently, where we actually got to a point where the assessors either felt that they needed our help financially or they were basically not able to address the appeal themselves at all and asked, we just basically took, and this more recent one in Milton Township, took the initiative and said, let's just do this. Let's go, this appears to be too aggressive of a challenge by a taxpayer and would be more, more than unfair for them to shift that onto the others, other taxpayers. So, and as we were doing that, we looked at our initial intergovernmental agreement, which was not only to deform the consortium, it basically was some of the pretense for the consortium, but also it laid out the mechanics of how a challenge would go into place and who would have to pay. And so we actually were following it, even though it had lapsed, it was only a three-year agreement, and we're still kind of following it the same format. But we, as we dress it, we said, well, let's, everybody wanted to reinstate it. Now, we do have members of the consortium that aren't really in our tax base and so they aren't really under what I would call our, the District 99 umbrella. But we, they also, they also are in some of the same townships that we have. So we have some surrounding schools, not in the District 99 boundaries, that also are loose members of the consortium because they all want to have the same conversation with the assessors that we have and have kind of tagged in behind. I think we have two or three districts like that. But anyways, back to this, an intergovernmental agreement, having that in place gives us a really clear delineation of who will pay if we do actually vote to go forward and put dollars into a formal intervention for assessors. Many times, and I would say most times, the assessor's just telling the taxpayer that they have a consortium behind them, willing to do that is all that it takes for them to compromise and come to the table and most are resolved. And the assessors know that it's in the school's best interest to resolve those before they get to the next level, which is a PTAB level, which really does take dollars directly out of our pockets. And there may be opportunities or conditions such that we would intervene on a PTAB as well. And this would cover that as well, would help us protect our tax base and really protect the taxpayers, making sure that there's fair allocations of our tax levy on them. And so we're asking for approval of the intergovernmental agreement, which would put this in place. This is virtually identical to the one that we set up in 2000, which was designed by an attorney, except that we have one last piece, the number 13 item, which is it can be signed in counterparts. And so individually, if one or two, it's possible one of the districts, probably more like a municipality, might not join this because they do their own interventions and have their own attorney on staff and want to take care of it themselves. So, but we do expect everybody who's listed on the intergovernmental agreement to sign it, but it's possible that one may not, but it still would be valid for those that do sign it in individual pieces. That's the background.
Questions or concern?
Just a question, you mentioned the one particular township, Milton.
Yeah.
How did that come out or is it still in the works?
It actually, did not sound, but our, the individual, I believe, was looking for an assessment somewhere in the seven to eight million dollar range. The property, the, we did a quick discussion with a very high-quality appraiser who said closer to 16 million dollars is the correct assessed value. And, and so we did approve to go forward with that. That was the one case where we had the actual board action for, to approve the attorney to go forward with that.
Right.
And the appraisal did come in at 16, four. So, and that's pretty strong. You have a very strong appraiser who's now bringing this to the, it hasn't resolved yet, it hasn't been, it's, the status here is coming up, I believe, early January.
It's still at the township level though?
Uh, no, well, no, this is, this one is a PTAB.
A PTAB, okay.
I'm sorry, so that's a property tax appeal board level. The assessor really is not, basically agrees with it, with our situation and, but is not doing a whole lot in this particular case, just doesn't have the resources.
Interesting.
I think a point of emphasis here is that, you know, this is, this is about situations where an entity or a person is, is trying to unfairly reduce their tax burden and shift it onto other people and that's.
More aggressively, taking it aggressive. And there's a lot of legal loopholes to get through.
Sure.
If you can use foreclosed properties and say, mine's the same as that foreclosed property and it's, it's hard for them to sort it out unless there's an attorney representing the other side.
Just that, you know, something like this, it's important for us to be able to do in cooperation with these other districts because when somebody's doing something like this, it's only, it's, somebody's got to do something about that to make sure that the, the tax basis, overall, people are paying their fair share. And, and so when somebody isn't paying their fair share, then that burden gets placed on other people unfairly. And, and so if we don't do something like this, more of these unfair things tend, tend to happen. And, and so this is a, a good way of, of trying to combat that. So I support it.
And those other entities are generally residences, individual residences who pick it up.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else?
So you need a.
Thank you.
Anybody like to move?
I would move the approval of the intergovernmental agreement as it's been presented.
Second. Julia moves, Terry seconds.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Terry Pabesich.
Aye.
Rick Pabano.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye.
Thank you, approval of non-resident tuition costs, I believe this is what we discussed in closed.
That's correct.
So I'll move to approve the assessment of non-resident tuition charges for student 14-r01 for the enrollment period in the 2013-2014 school year, beginning August 28th, 2013 through disenrollment on December 2nd, 2013.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Terry seconds.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pabesich.
Aye.
Rick Pabano.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye.
Moving on to old business, policy committee report, second reading.
Right, these are, these are policies that we've, we looked at previous and I don't believe there's been any comment, so we're bringing them forward for your approval this evening. I'll make a motion if there are any other questions. So I'll move that the board approve policies 4.30, 4.40, 4.50, 4.60, 4.80 as presented.
I'll second it.
Comments? Mike moves, Rick seconds.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Rick Pabano.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Terry Pabesich.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye.
New business policy committee report, first reading?
Right, so we have several policies that we met and discussed recently and would be open to answer any questions you might have about them. For the most part, I believe two of the policies are ISB policies that are replacing existing policies and then the others are, are amending existing policies that we have that were already in substance ISB recommended policies.
Just for clarification, all of the, the notes in red are the additions or the changes, correct? And the notes in, in black are either what were there before or, okay.
I have my color copy with me.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at ethics and conduct particularly, there's just one sentence.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Got it. Questions or comments?
If anybody does have any comments, please contact Rick or myself and we took pretty good notes during our meeting, so I'd be happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Rick. That's a, that's a lot of tedious work being on the policy committee. We greatly appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
This is the second reception of visitors, so this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the board on any subject that they would like. We're going to ask you to identify yourself.
My name is Debbie Gaspary. I live at 7209 Gold Grove in Derry in Illinois and I'd like to first thank the board for your volunteerism. I realize that you don't get paid for these positions and that you're here to make our schools better and I appreciate that. The reason that I'm here tonight is to urge the board to seriously consider taking the busing contract out for bidding again. It's my understanding that this is the third year of the busing contract, of the fifth year of the contract, and this is also the third year that we continue to have busing problems. We expect our students to be on time for school and to be responsible for their homework, be prepared for tests, prepare for their future in the college. And we also should expect to have the same expectations for any of our contractors and our vendors. Unfortunately, my bus route continues to experience delays on a regular basis. For the first eight weeks of the school year this year, I called regularly to let the school know that I had to drive my student to school. This creates a huge issue for me because I have three students that go to three different schools. So when one misses the bus, everybody has to get driven and sometimes somebody is late. And getting in and out of the parking lot, which I know there's nothing you can do about it, is a nightmare because, you know, it's traffic in, it's waiting, it's traffic out, and then you're rushing to the next school. So basically, I'm here to share with you that, you know, my child's bus has had a new driver four days a week, regularly, on a daily basis. It's not the same bus driver on the way home as it is on the way to school. And she waits for her bus in the morning and the bus is not there at night when she comes out. I have called, I've talked with Mark, I've talked with the Associate Principal of Transportation. I've expressed my concern because we're paying for some services that are not being delivered and I'm quite frustrated because it creates havoc in my day. Finally, the day that the temperatures were below zero or at zero, my daughter waited for her bus for 20 minutes before she walked home, came in freezing, cried for a ride. And of course, I also do a carpool for another neighbor in my area, so not only are my kids late for school, but another child that I bring because that child doesn't have a ride can potentially be late. So when it's cold out like that, everybody's running. When I drop my child off, my child was saying, that person's on my route, that person's on my route, that person's on my route, and they were all getting out of parent vehicles. So I'm extremely disappointed. I know the first year that we had busing issues, I actually took some of my neighbor's kids to school, my child wasn't in high school, because they were standing on the bus corner as freshmen's going, where's the bus? So this is continuing and it's concerning that we haven't fixed the problem at this point. And so I would urge you to find a vendor who wants our business and not to accept the mediocrity that we have right now. It's not a good use of our tax dollars and the service, quite frankly, isn't being delivered. It's frustration. I thank you for your time, I just want to share you with my comments and I hope that you will consider taking that out to contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, let's move on to communications and announcements. Len?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cupca. Len will be meeting this Wednesday at 8:00 and the topic will be the new pension law that was passed by the General Assembly. And Len is bringing in an attorney from Franziq to brief us on exactly the ins and outs and what they forecast and how will it impact our various school districts. So we're looking forward to getting an update as far as that's concerned.
Thank you, Keith. SASED?
Just a couple of things. We just met last week and heard a report that we're getting more and more involved with English language learners who also have special ed problems, so that's kind of a new, not new, but it's a dimension that's growing, that SASED is going to be, is going to be serving more and more in the future. And I think it will probably impact District 99 as well, I would guess. And also, Dr. Volpe shared with us that there are, there's new interpretation to some of the laws regarding stay-put, students are, special ed students are being allowed to stay-put during mediation rather than being moved while their, their situation is being mediated and also during transition. We are now being mandated for our transition programs to consider independent living goals for all students starting at age 14 and a half. So that's something that's being moved down a little further, it's probably very valuable, but it's something that will impact our programs in special ed. And also, Dr. Volpe is getting very concerned about space with SASED, so he'll probably be approaching our district among others to see if we have any to rent to him or to us, I should say, because we are part of SASED. So look forward to that. I would like also to have Dr. Volpe come at some time in the future to a workshop. He hasn't been back in a couple of years, just to explain the program, some of you haven't met him. And I think it's, the programs at SASED are extremely important, so if we ever have time on a workshop, he's perfectly willing to come and spend a few minutes giving us a broad overview of the program.
Joy, can we put that on the parking lot for?
Of course.
Thank you.
Why, thank you, I forgot about.
That the first car to be parked?
No, it's about the fifth.
It's a Rolls Royce.
Yeah. Illinois Humanities Council?
I just wanted to share with you the variety of programs that are being offered with the Humanities Council. First of all, the Communities Council is looking for an executive director for the first time in 20-some years. We've had the same director almost since the beginning of the Humanities Council, so that's quite a monumental search. And some of the things that are going on, last month, I told you about civics education and how important that is. There's a program that's being presented in partnership with the Jazz Institute of Chicago called From the Jazz Age to the Hip-Hop Era. There's another one called What Can Children's Books Teach Us About Environmentalism? And a third one, there was, there's quite an interesting link on the website to, to the 150th anniversary for the Gettysburg Address. There's some very interesting historical comments about that.
And the other thing is, is we are recruiting some new members on our foundation, and we hope that that will generate some, some sparks of enthusiasm. So those are our two things, but the Pizza Wars is a big, big deal. We have eight participants of pizza parlors.
Anybody serving anchovies?
I don't believe so. I think it's just, it's probably going to be cheese and pepperoni pizzas and maybe a sausage.
You said tickets are on sale, when, when will they go on sale again?
The week before.
Week before, and where can people buy them?
North and South High.
And just at the, at the front office?
We consult, we have tickets here, we can sell too.
Here at the Administrative Service Center, at the corner of Springside and 63rd. 27th is our regular business meeting, and we get to do that up at the Transition House. And then the four things on the parking lot, we'll discuss, or that's in the future, or what's?
We'll meet with Mark and we'll go over when that's going to come up on the agenda. Speaking of the Transition House, can we remind everybody of that address in case they can, they would like to come?
4232 Vennard.
4232 Vennard.
Right off Ogden.
You can see it from Ogden Avenue.
Right behind the Mr. Submarines.
Right next to the Mr. Submarine.
Just behind the Mr. Submarine.
North of it. 4232 Vennard.
Okay. We're looking forward to that. Anything else?
We're good to go.
We're adjourned?
Move to adjourn.